Susan, you ready?
Sure.
All right. We'll go with this. So everybody else, if I think I mentioned before, if you want to mute your mutual connection until we get to you, maybe the planning commission members, you might want to leave yours open or unmuted, especially if you're going to do a roll call. But we'll try and get this. We'll see what we can do here. So call the word of the planning commission meeting for June 15th, 2020. Susan, can you do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Siobhan?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
See, is he muted?
I think, I think he's muted.
Mr. Cox, if you can click on the little toolbar down there towards the bottom of the screen, I think it should show up as a microphone. Click on that and it should unmute you. Susan, do you know if you have the ability to unmute him?
Um, I can't. I don't think I can mute him. He's showing it on in the meeting. So.
Yeah, I see his microphone on the side is still muted.
Well, I can't do that. He has to be muted.
His name keeps turning black like he's trying to talk, but it's not coming through because he's muted still.
Yeah, I don't know. He's not showing like that on mine. Well, he's showing muted, yes. So, Mr. Cox, if you can hear us, you have to hover over your screen. Except for you have that shared document on there, Kevin, so maybe if you remove that shared document, he might be able to see because I'm, you know, maybe he can't see the screen.
Can you still see my screen?
And now, I don't know.
So, Mr. Cox, if you can see what I'm doing, this thing right here, if you can click on that and unmute yourself.
Susan, if you can see he's joined the meeting, you can mark him as present, even though he's muted presently.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, he's on. I can see he's on.
Okay. All right. So go ahead and go.
Uh, Mr. Velata?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Okay.
I wonder how we want to do if we can't get him unmuted, especially for all the other things, comments.
There's got to be a phone-in number. Have him call in on the phone. He could see the picture and listen on the phone.
Yeah, that's true. Mr. Cox, if you can see this, there's a, there's a call-in number on the invitation. This one, two, three, four, two, five, five, eight, five, four, nine. And then you'll have to punch in this conference ID. Maybe try that. Unless we can't seem to get you unmuted. While he's maybe trying that, we'll move on to approval of the April 20th, 2020 minutes. Does anybody have any comments, corrections?
Nope.
No. All right. Entertaining motion.
I move that we approve the April 20th units as a.
I'll second it.
Who was that who seconded?
Jason Roberts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more discussion? Susan, we should probably do a roll call for these things.
Okay. So, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. Cox, are you there? Not yet. Mr. Velata?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right. We'll, we'll get Mr. Cox's vote when he gets on. First item on the agenda is Cleanland Car Wash. And I'll pull up for now at least. Well, I don't know. Who's representing Cleanland?
My name's Tony Cerny. I'm representing Cleanland.
All right. Yeah, can hear you. Um, I think maybe first we'll have the city planner go through his comments. Mr. France, would you like to do that? And I guess if, Mr. Cerny, do you have electronic plans on your computer? If you needed to share it for any reason?
I probably do have access. I'm using a laptop. I tried to pull them up on.
Hopefully, we can get by without it. The commission, we all have our plans here if we, if we need to pull them out. But we'll go through, we'll let Mr. France go through his comments first and we'll see, see where we're at. If you're talking, Brian, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. I heard you saying that. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Sorry. I didn't realize you were ready for me. I apologize. So my report dated May 31st with regard to the final site plan for the car wash that's being proposed. I'll, I'll skip sort of the zoning history. We've talked about this project over a number of meetings. But I do just want to point out, as I, as I do in my report, in the background section, that all of this, all my comments are sort of premised that the fact that variances were applied for and received. And I've outlined those variances and it's my understanding those were, were received, but I, again, just wanted to comment on that. With regard to the final detailed issues of the final plan. My first comment, I speak to the detail bay. We talked about this the last time with the property owner. As drawn a car that would, would be waiting to enter that detail bay will conflict with cars if they're stacked to the ultimate stacking within the queuing lane, you could have a conflict, albeit it's, it's not likely. And the applicant stated during the preliminary site plan approval that patrons waiting to get into that detail bay are, it's by appointment only. There's no concern. So it's really more of a maintenance issue for the property owner. I just carried the comment forward that, you know, it could still be a conflict, nothing worth, I think, at this point. Trying to move things around on the site plan, we're far down that path, but again, just left that as a standing comment. One of the issues that previously had was the vacuum spaces in front of the building along Freeway Drive. It's a fair amount of hard surface and just area, high activity area with a number of those, those 11 vacuum spaces. The applicant's done a nice job in taking a look at it. They evaluated the mound, determined that they felt it was not feasible. To address the screening of the area, the applicant has proposed a continuous hedge of 39 dwarf burning bushes right about four feet apart. I believe that's a good and acceptable solution, the screening that area and providing a softening of that, that approach from Freeway Drive. My third comment relates to signage, just a standing comment. Signage will have to be submitted at a later date as a separate application. The planning commission has not reviewed that and, and doesn't typically do that during the planning process for site plan approval. The, the lighting plan, I noted a few issues with regard to some foot candles. In particularly, in particular adjacent to the residentially zoned property. Some bleeding onto that adjacent residential property. The applicant has revised the plan and corrected that issue. Really the only minor exceedance of that, sort of that acceptable level of the foot handle strengths now only right at the very entrance. It probably could be corrected again with some shielding or something, but that's really the only area of any concern. The, the largest concern that I've had is along that residential property line, of course, at the 271 entrance. That's all been addressed by the applicant. I had requested a couple railway brutes in some, in some key areas. The applicant has revised the plans and addressed that and provided those. I also requested that the row of Japanese U that was at the southern end of the site near the drive aisle leading into the wash bay be replaced again with dwarf burning bushes similar to what's in front of the vacuum spaces. The applicant has revised the plan to reflect that. So at this point, the only comment I had that remained was just some additional basin landscaping. And then consideration to a decorative fence at the southeast corner of the site, similar to like what Caldwell put in. But other than that, I think the applicant has done a nice job addressing the vast majority of comments. I'd recommend approval. Subject to the comments here that, that remain with regard to the basin, consideration of the fence. And then again, the applicant addressed all the other issues for lighting and, and landscaping. I can answer any questions the commission may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. France. Maybe we'll, we'll address these and then we'll go on to the engineer. Mr. Cerny, I know you sent in some revised plans the other day. I don't know if that was to address some of these comments.
Yeah, it was intended to address all of Mr. France's comments. One thing I'd like to point out on the, the lighting. It wasn't a mistake. I just, I think it's critical that we provide some light at the driveway entrance that leads out to the road. The idea of having no light at the driveway entrance seems to me to be more of a safety issue than anything because it makes it more difficult for people to find that driveway at night if it's not illuminated. So I've been trying to ask about that for a while. I just think it's a critical thing to have. We've taken care of the lighting and all the other parameters except at the driveway entrance where I've tried to get a little bit of light in that location. Revised the landscaping for the comments that were given to us. We've actually made a couple other changes that'll show up when we talk about the engineer's comments. The only things that I don't have on here, and I can't find it on the report that I got from Mr. France, was anything about the fence on the southeast corner or anything about the basin. It's not really a basin anymore. It's more of a yard. It's right there on the turnaround. It does hold a little bit of water and severe storm conditions, but it's really just grassed area there. And in the past, we, I didn't think there was a lot of value in the fence in the southeast corner. So we've been trying to avoid that. The building official had called me regarding the property line to the north and the residential. I know that the owner for Cleanland is in conversations with the property owner about potentially purchasing it. And if he does purchase it, I guess all the issues along the north would go away anyways, but he has agreed. The building official asked that we provide some sort of a sound barrier along the north property line if the owner doesn't purchase that northern property. We'll stipulate that we'll provide some sort of sound barrier that meets his, his approval if that doesn't go through. And that pretty much sums it up.
All right. So I guess, you know, Mr. France, we'll have to, you'll have to have, you'll look at some of these things, you know, after the fact. You know, as you said, there was no real big issues that probably couldn't be approved administratively if we agreed. So we'll, we'll probably have to go down that road if we choose to approve. I guess, Mr. July, you're on here.
Yes, Chairman, I am here.
Would you like to hit any highlights of your comments if they, you know, I know you've got a lot of detailed comments, but.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any planning commission comments at this time. Nothing new for the planning commission except just to note that, you know, I'll be reviewing, performing an administrative review of the plans here with the applicant's design engineer.
All right. Okay. That sounds good. Do we have somebody from the fire department on?
Yeah, Don's here.
Okay, good, Don. Any, any comments?
Yes, sir. Just that the documents for the construction for the building will have to be reviewed to meet all whatever the code requirements is going to be. I did have a conversation with the applicant when he picked up the form to order his NOC Fox. And one recommendation was that he may want to contact the state for his storage tanks, just to make sure there would be no surprises down the road. Just run that by the state, just to if any requirements are permitting or inspections may be required by the state.
Okay. That's good. A good heads up. Building Department, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern has been and continues to be the closeness of this car wash to a residential property. Whether we agree or not, we still have a house there. And it is my responsibility to make sure that this house doesn't get inundated with noise and, and all kinds of other problems. Currently, I'm handling two complaints for a car wash on East Aurora Road. The resident behind Tractor Supply wrote to Mayor and myself two really nasty letters regarding the noise that's coming out of this car wash. It specifically is, and I sat there to verify, to make sure that it was warranted and I'm glad that I did because I know it is. When the cars go into this wash and the jets come on, they make a tremendous amount of noise. And when the blower comes on likewise, they make a tremendous amount of noise. The only way to damper this is to keep the door closed when the car is being washed. When the car wash is completed, then the door can open up. And they do that in the winter time at the car wash in East Aurora Road, but they don't do that in the summer. So therefore, people are complaining about it. So we have to stop over and we have to figure out whether something like that could be done. And honestly, I don't look forward to having to handle some complaints from a resident because of something that could have and it should have been prevented. I asked Mr. Cerny to, at the very least, to consider a noise barrier there because I know that the truck picking up rubbish is going to be backing out and making all kinds of noise. And again, if Mr. grandson is going to buy the property, that's all going to go away. But if he's not going to buy that property, I'm going to make some stipulation on their drawing that those residents are protected.
Okay. Thanks. So it sounds like Mr. Cerny's saying that they, they do can, you know, commit to doing something if they cannot make the purchase of the property happen. So it sounds like he's, he should be agreeable at least.
But two, two things I'd like, I'd like to see a barrier there, a noise barrier. And I'd like to see the doors closed while the car is being washed. And then when the car wash is completed, the door can open and the car can exit. But during the car wash, the door should be closed to eliminate the noise because I, I saw firsthand, I sent parking lot from Tractor Supply and it is quite noisy when that happens. And the resident behind that are all up in arms. And if you would like to, I will share the two nasty letters that were received from the residents back there.
Okay. I'll take your word for it. I believe that the bank gave the call. I guess in this location, if it wasn't for this one house, this would be, you know, a much better spot because that's the only house around.
I agree.
But Mr. Cerny, you, you stated that, that they the, the owner will, is, is willing to do something if they can't make the purchase of the house work. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, then we need to stop a meeting and, and discuss this because again, I'm not going to issue a building permit unless that is resolved.
Does, is closing the doors, do you know if that's something that this car wash is capable of in between cars?
Well, when the car wash is operating full speed, the cars are essentially spaced about six feet apart. So it's going to be continuous operation.
Yeah, this is different than the one over on 82, which is one car at a time and it does the car, you pull in, you pull out. It's, you know, it's not a ton, a ton over here.
The closing, I mean, under normal conditions, it's fine. The car wash is busy. Cars are so close together that the door would never shut.
Okay. Yeah, I can understand that. Okay, well, let's, let's get all issues. We'll get them all out on the table. See who else. Mayor, do you have any comments?
I, I think Nino hit the nail on the head with, with what's most important with that. So I would strongly recommend that we take that pretty seriously with whatever we're going to do moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other staff that has comments that I missed? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, I'll, I'll open it up to the commission and go around. Is there any commissioners that have any comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Pat. I have a comment.
Okay.
From the, from what I understand of the discussion, and I use that car wash on Aurora quite a bit, and I know what you're talking about. And it sounds like the new Cleanland's car wash will be more like the one down in Northfield Center down there. Where the cars just keep coming through in a continuous line. And my comment is, why don't we get a, measure the decibels and see if the noise is within acceptable limits? I don't know what the limits are for noise and come from commercial buildings near residential areas. But that may be one way to see. I mean, will Cleanland operation produce less noise than the one on Aurora Road? Because those, those blowers are loud. They're bad about it.
So they did provide some decibel information, I think back in January or February to us. I don't remember the data, but there was something on the noise of those vacuums, I believe. I'm not sure about the blower in the tunnel though. Does anyone else remember?
Because if we can quantify it and go out and maybe if they're within, if we have some limits on that in our, in our code, I don't, I, I'm an expert on that. I don't know if we do or not.
Well, and not to jump in, I don't know if we're going in order here too, but, you know, and I, I appreciate the mayor's position and Nino's position in protecting the resident there, and that is a residential property. I very much understand. Trying to put myself in that resident's shoes if I were there as well too. But the other thing I, I keep thinking about is if we have that noise information from the tunnel and the vacuums, all that, how does that relate to the noise of Interstate 271 that's essentially in the backyard of that resident? Is it similar? Is it not similar? I mean, if, if they're able to deal with the noise from the highway, is it going to be similar to the noise from the car wash? You know, I'm just throwing the questions out there for discussion.
That's why I, do we have, do we have anything in our code that requires, you know, a decibel limit?
Well, I, I think, I think, you know, if it's less than 70 dBs, I think it would be acceptable. What I, how, what I think we should do, we should go to an existing car wash, and I'm willing to do that. And, you know, one that's similar to one that's being installed here. And, you know, just wait until cars go through the wash and find out how noisy it is. I mean, I don't know.
If we do that, we have to make sure.
But, you know, until we find out, we don't know.
We got to make sure it's similar equipment though. I mean, the one that's being complained down the street would could be the loud version of the equipment. I found the document, I think it was in March, but it only talks about the sound lever meeting, a sound level meter readings for the turbine vacuum, which I assume the 11 vacuum stands outside, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Cerny, what, what is the hours of operation? Because I know this isn't, this is not a 24-hour thing, right?
Uh, no, I, I don't know the exact hours. I expect that they'll open in the morning, probably around seven. And they'll probably close by nine o'clock and that's. You have other car washes from other owners. They open at seven and they usually are closed by eight o'clock because the traffic dissipates so much.
Yeah, so I guess all those things are, are things to consider. So, you know, it's, it's not operating all night like the one on 82. It's a different kind of system. I'm not sure. Well, I found it. Hours of operation, seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the letter sent to us on March 3rd, 2020. So assuming those haven't changed, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. I don't know if that's changed though. Nino, were you going to say something?
Well, I was going to say that. I, I think that Mr. Grandson is really in heavy negotiation with the owners of that property, actually brother. And I, I sure hope that he, you know, buys that property. So all these go, so I would just, I would just wait and see. I think, you know, if he's going to buy it, we will know probably within a week or two. And I, I, I think that if he buys it, then again, we, we all worry about nothing. But if he does, then, then we'll, we'll do some investigating and we'll try to protect the residents the best we can. I mean, they're not insurmountable. I mean, we can work with them. And they're showing an interest that they are willing to work with us. So so at this point, I think it's all good. We move forward and we'll do the best we can.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess, you know, the issues that Mr. France brought up, I think, you know, could be, could be most likely dealt with administratively unless somebody else has a problem with those. Some additional plans were submitted, but it was after his comments came out. So we let Mr. France have a chance to look at those. This issue of the, the noise, I guess, you know, if they acquire the property, it all goes away. That's the only residential property in the area. If it doesn't, the applicant is committed to, to working with the city to put some kind of barrier of some sort to get the sound down. Or maybe to prove that their system is a quieter system or something to that effect. I'm trying to figure out how to proceed because we've got, besides the sound area issue, unless somebody else has some questions, it sounds like the other issues could be taken care of administratively. Was there any more comments from the commission? Before I get too far?
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Joshua?
Please do.
Listening to Mr. Monaco's remark. And my only comment would be if we're presenting, or somebody is presenting some information, some technical data to homeowner who is objecting to noise. The only thing that homeowner is interested in is, is the end result, the noise. He doesn't care about how many decibels there are. If he hears noise, that's, that's not acceptable to him. So I think in that respect, I think we have to be a little bit careful here. And I, I agree with Mr. Velata and, and what Mr. Monaco said later. Maybe we're worrying about something we don't have to if that residential property is not an issue. But I think barring that, that particular item, I think we have to hold on this until we get that resolved. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay. Is there any, any other comments floating around up there?
I'd just like to ask that we not able to listen. I'm really happy we can get this approved condition upon resolving issues and let the owner and the city work through whatever things we have to or take care of that sound issue.
Do you know if there's a timeline, if they've got an idea of when they might have this issue with the adjacent property owner and potential purchase have that resolved?
Pete's on the line. Peter, can you hear us? Well, I know that they're in negotiations, but I don't know if they have a timeline as to when that will be resolved. The current owner, I understood, probably will never move back. And so they're trying to sell, I think it's the family that's trying to sell the house. It's not a lot of value to anybody else. The house itself doesn't even sit all the way on the lot. Part of the house. It's not a lot of value to anybody else. The house itself doesn't even sit all the way on the lot. Part of the house sits on the, uh, the right away for the expressway. But it's kind of a, kind of an unusual lot. The, the house didn't exist there now. It's pretty unbuildable.
Well, one thing I'm thinking that we could potentially do is approve it contingent on administrative review of Mr. Francis's comments. And contingent upon the applicant's purchase of the residential property. Um, if either of them can't be resolved, the administrative review can't have, you know, they don't agree, or the property doesn't get purchased, then you would have to come back and present what, what, uh, what you're gonna do about the noise. Um, so it gives you the opportunity to, if, if, if something, if you, if you can make the purchase work, you wouldn't have to come back.
Hey, Kevin.
Yes.
Uh, Pete Grantson just chatted in. He's having sound issues. I'll just read what he wrote and said. He says, "Sound issues. I'm hoping to finalize the deal within thirty days," presumably the deal for the purchase.
Okay, I see that right there. Okay.
And then he says, "Thank you."
Okay. I don't know what anybody thinks about, uh, about, about that idea of potentially, uh, approving contingent upon, geez, sorry about my email. Oh, geez. Um, uh, potential, you know, sorry, I'm all messed up now. Contingent upon the, uh, purchase of the residential property contingent upon, um, uh, the administrative review. Maybe I'll, I'll make that motion and then, uh, we'll see if I have a second that we can discuss it. So I'll make the motion for approval of the Cleanland car wash contingent upon administrative approval of the comments made in Mr. Francis's memo. And contingent upon purchase of the residential property adjacent to it.
What about the engineering comments?
I think those will, well, we'll, we'll discuss. I think that's to come later. Those will be dealt with. Um, is there a second?
Can you hear me? I would second that.
Ah, Mr. Cox.
Hey.
All right. So we've got a motion second. So discussion, the engineering comments would come in, I think, the detailed, uh, phase. I don't think any of that affects the site plan approval. Um, does anybody have any other thoughts on the motion, the second remain?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Um, I, I hesitate attaching the, um, acquisition of the property to your approval of a site plan. I think the, the issue, the noise, um, we held a public hearing for the conditional zoning certificate and received no comments from the public regarding noise. I think it's a fair issue of concern about the noise, certainly. Um, I just would hesitate to require it be contingent on acquisition rather than um, approval contingent on, um, uh, that the concern over noise is appropriately dealt with. And that, um, that dealing with that appropriately is left to the property owner. If he wants to perfect, uh, um, purchase the property, he can. Otherwise, uh, if he doesn't go that route or the cost is too high, um, he can come back to the commission with some recommendation as to how the noise will be alleviated. But to tie it to the acquisition, I think, um, is something that the commission should avoid doing.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So, uh, I would like to remove my motion.
Kevin, could I, could I weigh in on something? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, uh, if, if, if the, if somebody's gonna purchase the land, maybe whoever purchases won't care about the noise. And, and, and so I, I, I think that's what, uh, we'd wait on, uh, administratively to see what the, the new owner thinks about noise or doesn't think about noise before we, uh, and maybe, maybe there wouldn't be a problem when we can get the thing through rather than coming back to us. So I, I'm not so sure. The noise, isn't there gonna be a new owner to this property?
Well, I, they're, they're talking about the, the, the car wash buying the property is what, is what we've been talking about. So I don't know if, if the car wash doesn't file, if it'll just sit there or not. But I think maybe the way Mr. France suggested it would be kind of doing the same thing you, you are suggesting that, um, we say, you know, contingent on the, the issues and um, contingent on the, the car wash appropriately dealing with the issue of noise. Uh, and if that can't be done, then they have, then they would have to come back. Which could be somebody else buying it. Could be the car wash buying, um, and, and working out or, or the car wash not buying the property and they work out a deal of what was acceptable to deal with the noise.
And if someone else buys the, buys the property, there might be a, a noise issue. If the car wash buys it, it'd be all irrelevant. Is that right?
Correct.
I'd like to, administratively, if you possibly could, but I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it.
I have a comment also, if I could, if I may.
Yes.
Um, when I, when you first proposed it, what hit me was similar to what Mr. France so eloquently explained. My first comment was, is that legal to tie the approval of this car wash on the sale of another piece of property? I, I had a hard time with that. And, uh, I think Mr. France explained my feeling also about that, so.
Good, thank you, Pat.
Does Kevin, may I say something too? This is Joe. Yeah, I, I agree totally with Mr. France. Uh, I, I, I think that's the way to go with this. In fact, you could even take it one step farther and have the, uh, uh, the people with, for the car wash here, propose something now as like a pet plan B. That way they would have it already ready to go in case they didn't. But that, that's, that's reaching down the road. But I think it has to be tied to the operation of the facility and not a potential purchase. Thank you.
Okay, and, and I think, and that's not a bad idea, but the only thing I think is that doesn't, you know, he could propose something as a plan B and the city may not, you know, Nino and the mayor may not think it's acceptable and might need to lock it into a, a backup plan that, that, that may or may not be acceptable.
Kevin, I think, Kevin, can I jump in really quick too?
Please.
So really quick, I, I'll give my comment, but Pete Grantson texted or chatted in again, "I agree with Mr. France. I will comply with the city-approved sound solution." He put the word "solution" in quotes, "regardless if I become the residential owner," trying to see the rest of it, um, "or not." He said, "Besides, if I become the residential owner or not, then if I do own the second property, it all goes away." So it's not, it seems like he's willing to comply with what the city recommends for some type of sound solution. But I mean, short of having the sound meter level readings for the, the blower, we're calling it, that's in the tunnel, we have the sound meter readings for the vacuums outside, which I, I would think would be louder. There are higher pitched sound using that stuff too. Um, I believe it's within the decibel limit that the, the city code allows. Maybe Mr. France can confirm that, but I just want to reiterate something we haven't, nobody made a comment on, but the, the properties on top of an interstate highway that produces noise twenty-four seven. And then also the resident has had the option during public comments, all this stuff is posted, it's been going on for six months. Uh, unless I've missed it, I've not seen any formal complaint. Maybe he's had some informal complaints to, you know, uh, staff from the city, but I, I just, I just feel like, you know, our job here is, is there's a process to follow. If there was a legitimate concern, one hasn't been filed with the commission that I know of. Am I wrong?
No, I haven't, I haven't heard of anything.
Well, the only thing that I could say about that is, is Nino, is that the, uh, the owner is in a nursing home and I don't think he's able to function or I don't even think he was able to respond, but.
Okay, is that recent or has he been in there the whole six months or do we even know?
Been there probably about for three and a half months, I'm, I'm told. Could be, you know.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I'd want you to do the same thing for my property as well. I just, you know, I also wanna make, you know, represent, you know, Mr. Grantson as well and, you know, what he's trying to do. And if it's within the rules, then it's within the rules.
All we're trying to do to, trying to find an empty medium here, that's all. I mean,
Yeah.
So, and we'll work it out. I mean, you know, I, I, I think you could approve it, uh, and we will, uh, we'll visit some car wash, we'll see how noisy they are and, uh, we'll come to a solution. They're willing to work with us. So I don't see this as being a problem.
I think that's fair. I think, I think that's fair. I think we're willing to work with them. He says he'd put up a, some type of solution that, you know, I assume he would work out with you and your staff, so.
Right, exactly.
Okay, well, then, then I will definitely, I'll make officially, uh, withdraw my motion. Um, I'm not sure who made the second.
I did. I think I did.
Anybody who was possibly making it, are you willing to withdraw your second, I guess?
Yes, yes, I, I would.
All right, then I'll make a, a new motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Um, just, I wanna just clarify also, the comments that I had in my report, um, I did take the time and review, uh, the applicant's resubmital, and they have substantially addressed those comments. The only issue is um, that lighting at the drive entrance. I do think that the commission needs to provide some, um, some direction on that. It does exceed the, the historic standards that we found or that we filed, um, followed along with the one foot candle at the property line. Um, I, I do respectfully disagree with, with the architect. I think that, um, one foot candle at that entrance would be more than sufficient to light that entrance. And then within the middle of that site at the, at the, um, car wash itself, it's, it's heavily illuminated. I don't think anyone's gonna know, not know it's a car wash, and I think that the entrance is gonna be properly illuminated. Now, with that said, I think you do need to address it because if, if you find it acceptable, that's fine, then I won't need to re-review the, the plan as submitted. Um, because they've addressed all the other issues. Um, if you don't think it's acceptable, we need to let the applicant know that because if they resubmit for an administrative review and I don't have direction, um, then I'll continue to come back with a comment that it exceeds the standards that the commission typically follows.
Is this the plan? Yeah, here's the plan. Uh, the driveway.
Is this the one that was just?
This is the revised one, I believe.
Yeah, it is.
We've got low, real, real, you know, zero with the, the edges. Then here at the driveway, we've got threes and fours, so two to three times.
Right there, that driveway entrance is the concern.
Is this the closest light? Is that the one that's putting off this light, Mr. Cerny? Do you know?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Does, do any of the commission members have any opinion on, on these light levels?
I, I tend to lead, agree with Mr. France on that. There's a lot of light there from, um, even the buildings across the street and all that as well too. I really don't, I, I'd find it hard to believe someone would miss that.
And Mr. France, you say at that point, it should be, be, uh, one foot candles is what, is what should, to meet the code or to meet the standards.
Yeah, what, we, we followed the one foot candle at a non-residential property line. That, that entire property line up to the corner is, um, non-residential, so. And the issue is really right at the, the driveway entrance. I mean, where you're seeing three and four point seven foot candles just inside the property line. That's, that's heavy illumination. Um, so, you know, one, one foot candle is found to be acceptable in a lot of places. Um, so it, it feels like that's plenty, but uh, that's again up to the commission.
How do you, uh, this is Pat. How do you reduce it? Change the luminaires or, or what?
Yeah, I think there's a, a number of ways to reduce it. I'm assuming that it's, it's shining toward the entrance would be my guess.
Uh, we, we have to adjust it down if we can. I, I, I just totally disagree with you guys in that it's, it's really important, I think, in any commercial establishment to get light out on the driveway out to the road where people are gonna be pulling in so that they can physically see the driveway and, and not have to try to search for it while they're driving down the road. Three foot candles is not a tremendous amount of light by any stretch of imagination. You're, you know, you're gonna look for one to three foot candles nowadays. It used to be in a parking lot, a foot candle level was, was, you know, as high as ten around the light poles to try to get an average. So, but if it's, if it really is troublesome to everybody, I, I think it's a big mistake. We can go ahead and adjust it and get that light level back down to just, uh, less than one foot candle along the, uh, east parkway.
Any other commission members have any thoughts?
Just so the, uh, commission is aware, the full width of the apron is fifty feet. Out at the road.
Out at the road, where we're, where we're talking is fine.
Yeah, and I, I, my, my suspicion is if you carry those lighting levels out at the road, they're, they're probably still exceeding a foot candle at the, literally at the edge of the pavement.
Um, yeah, I don't know. We didn't carry them out, but I, I would be surprised if we carried that far.
You know, just, uh, for your information, what I've done in the past, uh, when, uh, given the occupancy permit, I've told the, uh, construction company to turn those lights on maybe a week or two before the occupancy permit is issued. And if there are any issues, then we would address it with either shielding or, you know, a lower bulb or something. But that's something that could, could be addressed on, on the side. I mean, that's not, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a big problem either.
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn with trying to uphold our standards as well as understand Mr. Cerny's concern. Um, knowing that there's foot handle levels close to the pole, which is, I don't know, thirty feet away, fifteen point four. I don't know that, that, uh, you know, the two point eight and the three point three at the driveway is gonna be any that noticeable. Um.
Mr. France, is this more of a concern because it's adjacent to a residential property or is it more the strap traffic on the street or what is the concern there?
Yeah, my, mine is more the concern of the traffic on the street. And stick, and sticking to the standard, we've used one for all our commercial projects that, that I can remember back to two thousand and six, as far back as I remember.
No, I mean, it is possible. Mr. Cerny has stated that. Maybe we just, uh, let's, let's hold our standards if you guys agree. And we'll ask them to adjust that and then it can be reviewed administratively. Um, if we can get it down closer, you know, very close to that one foot candle at the, at the property line. Uh, does that sound okay to the commission? I think so. I think that's reasonable. Okay, not hearing any strong objections. Okay, any other issues that we need to discuss? Because that, if that's the only other outstanding issue, we can, we can say that one can be addressed administratively. And then we'll deal with, uh, the noise issue. All right, not hearing anything. I'm gonna make a motion for approval with contingent, contingent upon administrative review of a revised lighting plan. And, uh, contingent upon the appropriate, uh, uh, how do I say this? Appropriately, appropriately addressing the, uh, noise issue to the satisfaction of the administration.
Second.
All right, any more discussion on that?
No.
Mr. France, does that sound okay?
I, I think that sounds great.
Okay. All right, not hearing any more discussions. Susan, can you do a roll call? Not hearing you if you're, if you're doing one. Did we lose you, Susan?
Sure, she's on.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you want me to, I can do the roll call for you if you'd like?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm on. I'm having technical difficulties.
Sorry, Susan, I wasn't trying to steal your job.
No, that's okay. I had to unplug and plug back in for some reason. It keeps kicking. No, that's okay. I had to unplug and plug back in for some reason. It keeps kicking me off. So, uh, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valata?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cerny. Made it through one.
There's one.
All right. The next, uh, next is, uh, Dustin Bash with Don Bash Jewelers.
Yes, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good.
And am I saying it right? Is Bash the correct pronunciation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. But some people say it differently, and I thought I was thinking right with the commercials, so.
You gotta hear the commercials.
We, we've heard it a lot of ways.
We've heard it the commercials.
Yeah. Um, since this is your first time in, uh, would you like to give us an overview of what you were planning?
Sure, so, uh, as you all know, uh, as you all know, we are, uh, in the plaza there with the Winking Wizard. Um, the plan is to, uh, build a jewelry store, um, to go ahead and, uh, increase our operation, uh, increase our showroom floor, um, as well as increase our, uh, workshop area. So, um, if Mark has anything else to add, more technical, uh, we're excited to, uh, expand in Macedonia again.
May I say something? Jessica?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that we're hoping to be able to, we appreciate you looking at our plans and we've been in Macedonia thirty-five years. We're hoping that, you know, we can work everything out to state. Just wanted to say thank you, and I'll remove mute now.
And I'm sorry, before you came on, I was talking away and didn't realize that I had left them, I had turned the mute on. Oh, sorry. Uh, brought up the plan. So, so the existing store is in here. You're going to develop, you're looking to develop this property here.
Correct.
And now, are you, the only user in that building is, is, is going to be you guys? Is that correct?
Correct, yes. The plans, uh, are just for us.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if you were having some other space here leasing. And is it two stories? Or is that a, just for looks?
Yeah, it's just to break up the roof lines to give it a more appealing look.
Okay, it's not necessarily a second story up there or anything?
Correct.
Okay. Well, uh, we've got comments, uh, from Mr. Franz. Um, I'll let him go and then we'll come back.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll start off by saying that, uh, this is like a hidden gem. I, I didn't even realize that there was that much space back there, so good job finding that, that property. And it's, um, it does have, uh, it has business office zoning, which we'll talk about here in a minute. That does present some challenges, but I think it can be overcome. Um, and it's exciting to see you guys, uh, present, um, a nice plan. I mean, the, the building will, will, uh, show well from, from, uh, Route Eight and eighty-two. So, that said, there are some technical sort of difficulties that we just need to work through. My report dated May thirty-first, um, I'll read the highlights from it. As I stated, the, the parcels that are involved are zoned business office. And, uh, new buildings and uses are regulated, um, pursuant to section eleven sixty-seven oh six of the planning zoning code. And then there's some other chapters, eleven seventy-one, and architectural regulations in eleven seventy-two that also apply. But the first hurdle that we need to, to work through with the, with the property owner, um, is, uh, is the, the business office zoning. Unfortunately, retail uses are not permitted or conditionally permitted in that zoning district. Um, it states that, uh, commercial uses are actually prohibited and office use is particularly at common boundaries with existing residential areas are encouraged. So that, that does present challenges you see on there. Um, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, is this your screen?
Yes, it is.
Are you, is this a live aerial that you have pulled up?
Yes.
Could you zoom out a bit and show a larger area? So I think it's important to show, um, if you look all, sort of, yeah, that's perfect. If you look down eighty-two, you'll see the extent of almost every property from, from, uh, Route Eight East along eighty-two, on North Side eighty-two. It's, it's all about the same depth and they're all zoned B one, with the exception of this prop, these properties here, their zoned business office. I don't know, um, you know, when that zoning came about. Um, I don't think it was during my time, but, uh, you know, I think, I think the zoning as it relates to a B one zoning can certainly be justified just simply looking at this view here. And you could see all the properties carrying northward, not the same depth, and they're all B one zoning. So with that said, B one is the zoning that you would need to, to implement this use. You could certainly have a more intense commercial. I wouldn't recommend that. Um, but a B one zoning would make the most sense and would allow the retail use. It would actually allow the applicant some other sort of luxuries of working with to eliminate some variances. And I can talk to that in a minute through my report. But if you didn't go the, the rezoning route to B one, um, which is just a straight rezoning through the planning commission council, there's no referendum zoning involved in this case because it is non-residentially zoned already. Um, if you didn't go that route, the applicant would have to seek a use variance from the board of zoning appeals to be able to put the retail, um, commercial use, um, on this property. So it is a hurdle that, um, the applicant will need to overcome. Uh, but again, as I said, one that seems palatable just based on the existing zoning file. So I went forward. I did review the, the site plan according to the business office standards. Um, assuming that, um, maybe if they went with the use variance route, we'd be reviewing it that way. Um, the minimum lot size, uh, issue or the minimum lot size standard is not an issue. Uh, they meet that requirement. There's about one point nine four acres on the consolidated seven parcels that are in question this evening. Um, but the business office, under eleven sixty-seven oh six E, does require a sixty-foot setback from the public right of way. And the building right now is fronts on Route Eight is about fifty-eight feet to the property line. So there's about a two diff, two foot deficiency. Either they'd have to adjust that or seek a variance if it remained in the business office district. Um, I'm, I'm on my second page here with comment number three, section eleven sixty-seven oh six F requires a twenty-five foot side yard setback for buildings and accessory buildings in ninety feet when abutting residential. The proposed side yard provided on the north side of the, of the building, abutting Harmon Drive and, um, and South, uh, Farm Road is twenty-eight point six six feet. And of course, ninety feet is required because it's abutting a residential district. Um, the building either must be adjusted to comply or a variance is needed from the board of zoning appeals. Again, eleven sixty-seven oh six F requires a twenty-five foot front yard setback for buildings and accessory buildings. The garbage dumpster surround is located about fifteen feet from the south property line. The dumpster surround would either need to be relocated to comply with the twenty-five feet or a variance from the board of zoning appeals needed. I don't know the height of the building. Um, it's three stories. Or, or it can be up to three stories or forty feet. We understand it's one story with some architectural dimension, if you will. I just don't know what that height is. I suspect it's below forty feet, but, um, the applicant just needs to confirm that. Um, another challenge in the business office district, eleven sixty-seven oh six J requires a lot width of a hundred and fifty feet at the setback line. Um, the lot width, in this case, uh, fronting Route Eight at the side yard setback's a hundred and twenty feet. So either a variance would have to be, um, obtained in this case to cure that deficiency. If the applicant went to the B one zoning district, a hundred feet is required, so a variance wouldn't be needed in that case. Um, some general code requirements, uh, the minimum drive aisle is twenty-two feet pursuant to eleven seventy-one, eleven B six. Twenty-four feet is being proposed. My suggestion would be to reduce it to the twenty-two feet and provide an additional two feet of setback along that north residential property line. I know two feet doesn't sound like a lot, but anytime you're dealing with non-residential uses, abutting residential uses, or you can gain more separation, even if it's two feet, it's just better to do that. And it can be done in this case and still meet the code. Um, the off-street parking requirements, eleven seventy-one, eleven C, um, based on this particular use, um, uh, because it's a hundred and fifty feet wide, allows, um, one space for every two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty square feet of usable flurria. Based on the seventy-three hundred square foot building, the required off-street parking is thirty spaces. Now, the code does allow for some, um, reduction for nonusable space, mechanical and such. So I'm taking the most extreme, meaning the, the most it could be based on a hundred percent use would be thirty spaces. Thirty-nine are provided. Um, with thirty-two additional parking spaces being set aside for future use, which, uh, does sort of beg the question of is the intent of another building? It, it looks like that's probably the case. I'm going to be curious to hear from the applicant just what maybe the future intent is. Not that it's an issue to have another building, but I think just being as knowledgeable on the front end is, is best to eliminate any potential concerns later. Um, but with regard to the application as it stands now, I think the applicant can reduce, uh, about eight parking spaces from the two norally parking aisles. Um, that would make those rows of parking about seven spaces versus eleven. And it'll give some more green space initially, uh, by reducing that parking and still being in compliance with the code. Um, section eleven seventy-one, eleven E three requires drive entrances to be sixty feet from residential zoning district, from residential zoning districts. The northern drive entrance to this site is about forty-five feet from adjoining residential. So that brings to light a couple of issues. So if it stayed where it is, a variance would be required. But as you start to, Mr. Westbrook, if you could zoom back in to that subject area, as you start to look at that potential drive location and then look at the existing northern drive location to the, the lizard plaza where, um, Don Bash Jewelers currently is, ideally what you'd want to do is try to line up the drive entrances um, and avoid offset intersections wherever possible and whenever possible. Now, we see on the site plan on sheet A one hundred, there's a retention pond showing roughly an area where it could potentially line up. I'm assuming grading, um, and follow the property, um, sort of dictates that, but I don't know that to be true. I haven't dove into those details, and I know Mr. Gelati's online. He might be able to speak to that in a minute, but I think ideally what you try to do is line up driveways wherever possible. Um, again, avoid offset intersections and just, um, make traffic movements a little easier, particularly as we're adjacent to a residential area. So if it were possible to line up those drive entrances, you could potentially avoid, I think you could avoid the, uh, the variance for the separation of the drive entrance to the residential district. Um, so just some things that need to be kind of vetted out as, as we're in early stages of the, the plan. And again, this is more of a concept, um, rough preliminary plan at this point. Um, so we don't have signage information, photometrics, landscaping, um, not too many architectural details, stormwater management. Those things will come later, but I do note those in my report as being necessary. I think the planning commission has to table this this evening. Um, and I think it's going to be a nice use of the property to put this, this building on there, but we do have to overcome, the applicant has to overcome use issue. I've given you a couple of options to do that, um, but this evening you won't be able to approve it because from a use standpoint, it doesn't fit in the business office. I can answer any questions the commission may have at this time.
Well, thanks, Mr. Franz. That was, uh, great, very informative. Uh, guys, do you have any questions for Mr. Franz before we go on to the reviews? Nope, doesn't sound like it. Okay, well, uh, we do have some other reviews. We, we'll have to come back and talk about a couple of these things, but maybe I'll let everybody get their, uh, comments out, too. Um, is, is Pam Schultz, is she on?
I don't believe she's on, no.
Okay. Well, she's got some, some architectural review comments. And, you know, knowing that we cannot approve tonight, maybe it's best for you guys to just, you, you guys have seen, seen her comments. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
Okay, you have. So maybe we'll just let you guys, unless you, unless you have something that you really want to discuss or dig into on those, let you guys just have those and, and kind of be thinking about those uh, for the next time you come back as you're, as you're dealing with these other issues, if that's okay.
Right.
Um, let me see. Uh, Mr. Gelati, you have, uh, any comments that, uh, you want to talk about?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Chairman. Uh, I, I did have, uh, comments that I submitted to the, uh, commission. I, I think everybody on the commission and the applicant has a, a copy, uh, of those comments. So since it's a virtual meeting, I won't, uh, go through and read each one, uh, one by one, especially since there's a possible rezoning, uh, item that's been brought up here, uh, today. Um, some of my comments are really just advisory in nature to the applicant, uh, so they know what to expect, uh, when they get to the administrative review, uh, part of the process. Um, but in summary, the, um, the plan that was submitted is, is very preliminary in nature. Uh, so I'd recommend that the, uh, applicant, uh, update the plan, uh, for the comments, uh, and, uh, resubmit to the planning commission for a future meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bell, do you have any, any comments?
Well, even though it's preliminary that, you know, once we, everything is in place in the construction documents, we'll, we'll have to review those for code requirements, for alarms, sprinklers, whatever may be required based on use group and size.
Okay. Excellent. Um, Mr. Monaco, do you have any, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, since I've been here in Macedonia, we had quite a few businesses that tried to go in that location. The last one was a car wash. Of all the businesses they have approached me, I think this is one that I think fits that, that parcel perfectly. Uh, I, I, I think it's great that a business in our city has chosen to stay with us rather than move somewhere else. And I think that they, in their location, it would be a great addition to our city.
All right, thank you. Um, Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that, you know, the Bosch family not only lives and works in our town, but, you know, I've been a member of our community for a long time, so a lot of times we talk about unintended consequences of, of uses of land, and I can tell you in my, my short tenure so far, I, we, we find a lot of those things. I try to listen to things from the past. In terms of this location, I, I know we're in the preliminary stages, but the use of this property for this family and what they want to do i- is, is perfect. And moving forward, you know, we want to work with them as much as we can. Um, this idea came about, I think I met with them over a year ago to kind of discuss it and, you know, it's coming into fruition now. So as we move forward, I think it's the best use of the land and it's, it's a great neighbor to have. Again, not only do they work here, but they live here. And, you know, I, I put a lot of emphasis and respect on, on people that do that. So things to think about moving forward, but, uh, hopefully this, this gets wrapped up sometime in the near future.
All right, thank you. Um, commission members, does anybody have any questions that like to, out there?
I, okay, I just have one really quick question. It's just, um, it's just a curiosity. On the plans that, the, the tower structure is, is that like, what, is that how that will look when the building's complete if you go for these plans? Or is that where, will there be signage up there? Or which, what's your plans with that if it's not what's drawn in the drawings?
Yeah, so, uh, the tower is going to be used for, uh, signage. That would be our, our main plan. Um, obviously, it's not drawn there as, uh, basically, we submitted these, uh, preliminary drawings. Uh, we knew that the use was, uh, a one huge hurdle, um, that needs to be addressed. So, uh, we're actually only in contract with this property. Um, so that, uh, is something that we need to address very quickly. Um, as far as us being allowed to, obviously- Um, as far as us being allowed to obviously uh, you know, maintain that as a retail uh, store. So that was one of our uh, main issues or, you know, things we wanted to get addressed as well as um, the setbacks um, as we feel route eight um, visibility is going to be crucial um, to us being able to maintain um, that current spot.
Thank you. Any any other members have any questions? Okay, well, I guess, you know, just just like the mayor saying, I I I sure hope this can go forward, I sure hope uh, you can find a way to get get or get through these, you know, especially the use uh, issue, I think the other ones, you know, there's ways to deal with them. Um, yeah, because we'd love to see you guys expand uh, and 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 stay here with us. Um, yeah, I'm I'm glad you guys submitted, even though you know you've got some issues in this preliminary, so at least you get the official comments from the planner and the engineer and everybody, and you get these on paper, you know what 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 you're dealing with and what challenges you've got to uh, accomplish. Um, knowing that, um, you know, I I think there's there's nothing else we can really do tonight besides table this. Um, but at least you've you've gotten, you've gotten uh, your plan out there and uh, you've gotten your official comments. Um, is there anything further you guys would like to say?
I do not have anything, no.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, commission.
Hi, again, um, if I could just say a quick thing, it's I'm Denise Bash. Um, I just again wanted to thank you guys for, you know, your feelings on this, and we too also hope we can work this out and with all the COVID stuff. We're trying to work a little quicker than before. So anything you could do or tell us to do um, to expedite this would be wonderful.
Yeah, and and I think the the options that Mr. Francis laid out there, I mean, those are your 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 couple different options. Um, you know, you could clearly discuss these with the city to see what what you guys think is the best way to go. Um, you know, they could help you maybe strategize or something like that, you know, figure out the best way to get through this, because I think I think everybody, I don't think anybody's got a problem with this business, I think it'd be in terms of what's going to be up against the neighborhood, it's just sure better than, I mean, like, what you're Monica was saying, that, you know, a car wash was proposed here once, we were just, you know, talked about that for an hour. Um, you know, there's some significant noise, I don't think you guys are a real noisy business. But uh, you know, so I I I think, you know, be in contact with the building department, uh, they can help help you work through these issues and give you some more guidance. Um, and and we, and I hope the best for you. Um, I guess at this time, no, I I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, just um, to what um, uh, Mrs. Bash said, uh, I do think that um, it'd be it'd be nice to give the applicants a little more direction and it'd be helpful to know if the intent is to have another building that does it does change kind of how, you know, they're the most expedited approach for them. It's fine if the intent is to have a building, it just, it may be better for them to go the the rezoning route if there's another building contemplated, if it's really us this one building, that it may be faster to go use variance. And um, a little a little easier for the the um, city to work with, so I guess to be able to answer um, Mrs. Bash's question, if they can tell us if there's possibly another building contemplated, it'll it'll give us the ability to kind of give him give him some guidance, we can't tell them how to proceed with their application, but at least as she had said, anything to help expedite it um, would be, it'd be best to know that upfront.
So is there anything you guys are able to share with us concerning that?
Uh, as of right now, um, there's definitely only the one building, uh, it was brought up, you know, it's maybe down the road and we're talking way down the road. You know, add maybe some kind of tenants uh, on that uh, that side that would face uh, the adjoining plaza, they had a building down there, but that was, you know, it's more more talk rather than you know, we're talking way, way, way down the road, maybe ten fifteen years, um, but you know, you always want to try and think of those things ahead of time, so.
So knowing that, Mr. France, does that, does that change anything, or you know, if it's that far down the road, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm of the, you know, listen, again, I can't, I can't tell the applicant which way to proceed, I mean, that that, you know, the city really can't do that, but I think that if if I were in their shoes and eventually, even if it's ten fifteen years down the line, it may be better to just go the rezoning route now. Um, the applicant can uh, like you said, work with the with the mayor's office, there's a opportunity to maybe work on a development agreement as well and put some things into an agreement. Um, but that may be the best route for the applicant in the long term to secure their, you know, their long-term interests.
But it's a it's a little bit slower, is what you're saying, it may take a slight bit longer to do.
Yeah, the yeah, the rezoning process, you know, starts at the planning commission, let's say it's thirty, you know, ideally thirty to forty-five days for that process, and then it's approved by council. There's readings, um, so yes, that that process could be up to, you know, ninety days. Um, and uh, as opposed to a variance, which is you know, apply for the next meeting and um, you know, apply for a use variance, that's faster, but again, if, you know, just I don't know what their timetable is and what their, you know, agreements are with the with the property owner, but if if they could get an extension and they could go the rezoning route, um, you know, that may be their best long-term interest, just something they need to kind of think through as they're making their decisions and I think it's just, you know, for us to be able to give them that that guidance and let them know those options, um, then they can kind of, you know, plan accordingly and and make their decision. It's good conversation to have now.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
They uh, couldn't they go for a variance now and fifteen years down the road if they decided that they want to put up another building, they could do a lot split and do a rezoning then?
Um, yeah, so i- in theory, but so a a use variance would be applied to the property in question, I'm assuming they're going to consolidate those parcels into one property. Maybe if they consolidated them separately, um, and use variance would be applied to just the property that would have the the current building on it, but you know, I think that'd be a good question to kind of um, mull over with um, legal counsel and talk to them. Um, but that's possible, but again, I think some some care and diligence upfront would just make it a little better in the long run.
Thank you, appreciate the comments.
All right, and and you know, and city staff is always available in the future to to have more discussions if if you need it. I offer that up because it's it's not me, so easy for me to throw out there. Um, any more, any more thoughts, any more questions going on? Hearing none, uh, does someone want to make a motion?
I'd move that we table the uh, if you can hear me, table this uh, application.
Except Mr. Cox, who is the second?
Jason.
All right, so you can motion a second, uh, Susan, you want to do, or any more discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I think I I think I heard the motion uh, to table based on um, the applicant's need to um, to mitigate the zoning issue as it relates to the property and to be the business office not permitting retail uses.
I I believe you're correct, you did hear that, Susan, did you get all that?
I will, I'll look at the video.
Okay, okay. All right, any more discussion? Uh, Susan, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheavone?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you and uh, good luck and hopefully we'll be seeing you very soon.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next is uh, Mr. Winkelman. Uh, St. Gregorio on Aurora Road. Are you, you're here with us, right?
Yes, sir, I'm here, can any, can you hear me?
Yep, it's a little, it's a little scratchy, but we can, we can hear you. Um, do you want to, you know, you've been in a few different times and I know basically you're changing some stuff on the front, you want to just give the the overview of what 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 you're changing on the front?
Yes, the uh, when we were before you, uh, gosh, I don't know what it was, seems like it's two years ago now, but uh, uh, we had come in to uh, remodel the front and been been approved to do that with uh, uh, face brick at the bottom, up uh, three or four feet, and then doing the rest of it with a horizontal uh, vinyl siding. And the church uh, tabled the project uh, for financing and during the course of that time, they decided they would like uh, uh, to uh, keep everything exactly the way it was, but change the vinyl to face brick and and the bottom that was going to be brick to change that to a, you know, a stone look, uh, what do they call that, split face block with a with a stone water table on top of it. And and so that's why we're resubmitting, just to change, just to change the uh, facade material, that's all.
Okay, okay, um, but we've got comments from uh, city planner, Mr. France, do you want to go over your comments?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. uh, Chairman, um, my report dated June seventh. Um, and as the applicant said, there there's really, um, this is a fairly straightforward request, I actually think correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Winkelman, we actually saw this initially, this drawing at one point, and um, I think because of cost, they were going the other way. Um, so, because I I know I had this in my file already from last time we talked about it. But nevertheless, the property is not located in the town center district. Um, it is subject to general architectural requirements found in eleven seventy-two oh two. Um, I think that um, we had previously approved horizontal vinyl siding on the the building facade. And now this request to go to a standard face brick with a concrete masonry base is perfectly acceptable. My only question is um, as I look at that that uh, concrete um, masonry base, uh, Mr. Winkelman, is that a four inch or an eight inch uh, concrete block that's being used?
Eight inch.
Eight inch, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I'd ideally it'd be nice if it was a four inch, but um, I I suppose it's okay, uh, four inches is a little bit more uh, cost to the project, but um, you know, it blends a little better with that uh, that face brick and fronting on the main road, but I leave that to the commission.
Did you say four, four inch, are you talking four inches high instead of eight inches high?
Correct.
Is that, okay. Well, I believe it, I mean, what we did was eight inch, they really liked the way that the church looked next door, um, the Methodist church, and that's eight inch, I believe, and they liked the idea of the heavier looking pieces on the bottom and then going to the smaller profile of the face brick above, so.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily married to it, I I do like a four inch with a four, with a standard um, brick, but yeah, the adjacent property has the eight inch, I mean, it it, I think it'll be fine, um, so if the commission's okay with it, I I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right, uh, building department, you have any comments? Nina?
No comments, thank you.
No comments, all right, um, fire department, I'm guessing no, but.
No comment, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, Mayor?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I think that's everybody, uh, commission, do you have any questions or comments? Sounds like no, all right. I think it looks nice, I think it'll look better than what the, that you, what you proposed the last time, I think this is, this would be good. Um, if no one's got any comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I I would move we approve it as submitted, uh, as they submitted it, it seems like a a a better uh, than the prior.
Okay.
And said, yes.
Great, okay, so Mr. Cox, the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Jason.
All right, any more discussion? Sounds like no, uh, Susan? If you're not having any technical issues, can you do a roll call?
No, we're good, um, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Sheavone? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Here, I mean, yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheavone?
He's still on.
Are you muted? You have to click the microphone.
He's not, he's muted.
Huh. He went to get popcorn.
Where's this first, oh, there he is, he's not muted. I think it's approved. I think we have, oh.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Excuse me, yeah, well, uh, I guess if if he comes back, uh, Mr. Sheavone, you there?
I see him.
Yeah.
Are you muted? He must be muted.
Yeah.
Okay, we we can, we can check with him to make sure, but uh, I I think it probably passed with the rest of us saying yes, even if he says no, we should get it for the record. All right, uh, let's jump back to the agenda. Um, Western Reserve Grace, yeah, oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Man, that's all, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad to see you again.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is Western Reserve Grace Church, uh, new uh, monument sign. I think I saw, let's look it on here somewhere on the list.
Yep, I'm on it.
All right, uh, why don't you give us a quick overview of what's being planned and uh, we'll go from there.
Okay, um, we would like to propose a double-sided illuminated cabinet sign. Uh, the sign will be non-illuminated, however, there are existing spotlights that would very remain. Um, the overall sign, I know, size of the sign, I know the first one we submitted was larger, it was about six square feet larger than what could be approved, so we did reduce that to um, forty-two inches by ninety-six inches. So it is, it does fall within the square footage allowed. Um, the Western Reserve Grace Church part of the sign that reads Western Reserve Grace Church along with the address and the website would be vinyl graphics. And then also the church, I know another request was for landscaping to be around the sign. And we did submit plans for some landscaping that would be around the sign as well.
Okay. I'm trying to, did, did we see those revised plans? Susan, I don't think we have.
I don't have a copy of them.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything with that.
Yeah, I first submitted over on maybe late Friday, I believe it was. By Ryan.
Yes, that's that's correct, Jessica.
Well, you, I guess even if we do have have those, you know, we'll have to, i- i- if best, we can maybe do an administrative review, but probably won't be handling it.
Yeah, and it does all the same, it's just the size has been reduced.
Okay, well then, uh, let's jump over, we'll have Mr. France go through his comments and we'll see what issues he has and if that would change anything.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my report dated June seventh. Um, and uh, the applicant's agent did describe the request. Um, as it, as uh, as as I reviewed it, it was a five by ten sign, fifty square feet, it sounds like that's been revised. Um, if it's been revised to forty-two inches by ninety-six inches, that's three and a half feet by eight feet, which is twenty-eight square feet. If the applicant can just confirm for the If the applicant can just confirm for the record that that's the size, the square footage of the sign?
Yes, that is correct.
The twenty-eight square feet complies with the code, and I think that's exactly what's out there right now is twenty-eight square feet, so, um, that would be acceptable, and, and as, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we could confirm that with administrative review if that's acceptable to the commission. Um, but we have a couple other issues, so, sounds like there's some landscaping also being proposed to be integrated into the sign, which is great. The sign height at six and a half feet is acceptable. Um, but, uh, the one issue that, that does come to mind, the property is located in the town center district and subject to the specific architectural requirements in eleven seventy-two oh two and eleven seventy-two oh three. The, um, eleven seventy-two oh three, uh, are the requirements specifically for the town center district. The intent of that district is require materials that contribute to the Western Reserve architectural character. My opinion, um, a painted aluminum cabinet sign with vinyl graphics are not supported by the town center architecture standards. Um, conversely, I, I think the existing sign appears to comply, um, just by review of it on a Google, um, street view, it looks like it's, um, got a monument base with some brick materials to it. Um, that's more in keeping with the town center district than the, um, the, uh, aluminum cabinet with the vinyl graphics. So I, I do think that the commission should have some conversation about the material type. If the square footage, as the applicant says, is at twenty-eight, that's not an issue and we can confirm that. Landscaping is simple to confirm, but really the, the materials is what, um, I think the commission needs to have a conversation about.
All right. Uh, that was everything, Frank?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Does, uh, anybody else, building department, anything?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with the applicant the last, uh, two or three days, and, uh, I think they, uh, it came to a conclusion that they do need to comply with the Western Reserve. And I think the two drawings that you have in front of you that, by the way, I was not able to get because I was missing from work for a day or so, um, they should reflect that, uh, they're, they're trying to attempt to meet the Western Reserve look.
The, the new ones that they just submitted, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, we'll come back to that issue then in a second. Um, mayor, do you have anything?
Nope, Nino took care of it all there.
All right. And, uh, Mr. Bell, I'm assuming no?
That is correct, no comment.
Okay. All right. So I guess going back to the, to the applicant, so, um, you know, we can confirm with the plans you submitted, you have the square footage, like Mr. France says, we can confirm the landscaping. Um, those can be reviewed administratively. I guess, did you do anything with the materials, uh, to address the comment about the Western Reserve? Not having those in front of us?
Um, they are still the painted, the painted aluminum with the, the vinyl graphics applied.
Okay.
If I could, uh, if I could also step in for just a moment, if you would excuse me, uh, my name's Ryan Collins, I'm with, uh, Central Graphics, and I'm part of this project as well, and I've been in communication with the church, um, who are, are very, very willing to comply with whatever, uh, the city deems necessary to be able to move this project forward. Um, and my job here today is just to, uh, if, if in fact the aluminum with vinyl graphics does not comply, um, and it is something that we cannot move forward with, just to kind of collect a little information from the commission, uh, to, uh, recommend new designs for the church moving forward.
Okay, that might be good, um. Oh, the best way, Mr. France, are you able to give any guidance to, as he was kind of looking for? Think it revised?
Well. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that the aluminum cabinet is, um, is challenging in the town center district, so any way to avoid that aluminum cabinet or do something with, you know, maybe build it into a surround with some face brick to minimize that. I, you know, I'm not sure, but I think that's, you know, probably my, my largest concern is that aluminum cabinet.
The, the current sign that is in place right now, um, is actually a condensed foam, like a stucco sign, and it has some acrylic, uh, lettering mounted to the front of it. Um, and if, as you said, Mr. France, if, if that does comply or appears to comply, then that's a possibility, we could recommend, uh, a stucco sign that has, uh, acrylic faces mounted to it. Um, I'm just mostly here to kind of gather information. The current design, um, which was proposed by the church, uh, is set in place to reflect their interior design. Uh, they have a lot of wood, uh, in, in the interior of the church on purpose, um, and everything that, that their branding represents is all the white and green together. So the white, the green with the wood is reflective of their current branding, their website, and their interior design.
Yeah, so I, I guess I, I would say, so horizontal wood clapboards, um, for siding purposes, um, cedar, just different woods are permitted in the town center district, so somehow incorporate that in. Um, you know, I, I wasn't aware that the existing sign is stucco, that's technically non-conforming to the regulations. I don't know when that was approved. Um, I think it's sometime, um, but, uh, stucco actually specifically, or drive it is specifically prohibited in the town center district. Um, so I think just, you know, trying to look at that section eleven seventy-two oh three, um, B, or eleven seventy-two oh three B, one and two really gives you guidance on the types of materials. And, uh, you know, another option is, um, you could have, you know, throw out some ideas to, um, Pam, the, the city's, um, designer who works on the specific design, uh, requirements for buildings, she, she could be helpful as well. But I think if you, if you stick to those materials that are listed as materials that are acceptable, I think you'll have no problem getting the sign approved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Um, commission, do you guys have any, any questions? Comments? Sounds like no, um. I'm thinking, uh, you know, we've got a couple of things that, that we think probably are okay, which is the size and the landscaping, but if, if we feel it needs to come back for the materials, um, we could probably just table it, address those three issues and, and deal with it all at once.
Can I ask a question, Kevin?
Yes, please.
Uh, i- i- is it possible, uh, that if they, uh, if they change their plan, uh, for the design, uh, I mean, talking maybe to Pam Schultz and, and looking at that code section, that they can possibly conform to what the town center would like, uh, for their sign and present that administratively, uh, and then it might not have to come back? Is, is that a possibility?
Um. Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I know there's some flexibility and things that we could do, um. Mr. France, do you think it would be, it doesn't be a better one to, to come back since we're talking about kind of the overall look of the sign, or?
Well, I mean, I, I could see the benefit, I could see the benefit of the applicant to being able to work it out administratively from a timing perspective and not waiting for the next meeting. At the same time, I could see the benefits of the commission to see actually what it's going to look like and, um, you know, feel comfortable approving the signed design. It's really entirely up to you guys. I mean, I could go whatever direction you, you want to, um, impose. I can, uh, I could help the applicant either way.
Okay. Okay. Well, if anyone of the commission members feels strongly, uh, I'd, I'd entertain a motion to, you know, it could be either to table the whole thing or it could be for administrative review of the, the square footage and the landscaping and the, the materials. Um, I'll let you guys propose then.
Um, but maybe I'll make the motion, then, just so we can discuss it too. I would move that we, uh, uh, we send this over administratively, uh, and, uh, for those three items that you mentioned, uh, including, uh, the materials for the sign, if the applicant can, uh, uh, meet those, uh, according to the, uh, to the planning, uh, department.
All right, so, so basically there's administrative review regarding the, the square footage, the material type and the landscaping. Um, is there a second? I'll, I'll second that. I'll second that, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, uh, is there discussion on that? Yes. Somebody, somebody saying something?
I have a comment, just to make sure I heard it right. We, we are proposing to approve contingent on resolving the issues we just discussed.
Yes.
Administratively.
Correct, so two of them, we believe are already in the plans, which is the size and the landscaping. The third that would really be the one that would have to be worked out is, is the materials, and we're letting, we'd let that be administrative review.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How about if, uh, the applicant works with Pam and once that they come up to a, an agreement, then I will share that drawing with the members of the planning commission for maybe a phone approval? And then we can move forward?
Um, I don't know that we can technically do that.
Okay.
But I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate, what's that? I'm just.
Can we do it through email?
I don't think so because of, it would need to be, uh, open, public.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for, for review.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the commission can't, can't do it over, they can't deliberate over email, and, um, I wouldn't recommend a phone deliberation either. They, certainly would have to be a published, advertised, public meeting and, which would be basically just like this, essentially.
And I, I guess if, if the issue got to a sticking point where there couldn't be an agreement between the applicant and the administration, you know, it could be brought back to us. Um, and we're assuming that this could be done administratively, if it can't be handled administratively, it could always come back. Um, but I think the way it's written now, or the way we've got it, the motion now is that, uh, we're assuming between Brian and Pam and the applicant, uh, we can, we could work something out. Um, any more discussion on that?
I would just like to, uh, step in real fast and say that the, the church is pretty ready and willing to comply with just about anything that is necessary in order to move this forward. Uh, so, we will get together with Pam and, uh, figure out exactly how we need to design the sign that will work for everyone, um, and they're, they're pretty eager to get it going, so they're, they're pretty ready to work with whatever is necessary.
That's what I figured, they've been, they've been agreeable in past things, and I'm not sure we can, we can work out, you know, there could be some of the common agreement there. All right, any more discussion? That's nuts, uh, Susan, you want to do a, a roll call here?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone? Come back to him, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox is still having technical difficulties, I guess?
Mr. Chivone?
Yeah, I had the second, yeah.
Mr. Chivone, I mean, yeah, sorry.
I al- I almost felt like I thought I kind of heard him, but it was like cut off or something. Joe, are you, are you there, Joe? Yeah, I think, I think I hear still like a buzzing sound, but that's it. I wish I could somehow click on him or something and bring him up so you can give us a thumbs up or something, but, all right. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll confirm his approval there with that last one.
Okay.
All right, uh, the next issue is Ohio State waterproofing, but I've been informed that they, uh, they're, um, uh, they requesting to be removed?
Yep. They request it to be removed.
Okay, uh, Mr. France, do we need to make a motion to remove them from the agenda?
Um, yeah, a- absolutely, and are they requesting to be removed or tabled?
Um, they said for a future date.
Okay, so, so tabled, um, then, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, I encourage the commission to move to table the request at the, or table the application at the applicant's request and, uh, table it to a date certain, put it into the next meeting, um, July, um, let me get my calendar up, July twentieth. Yep, thank you, Susan.
Okay. Well, I'll do that, I'll make a motion that we table Ohio State waterproofing at their own request, uh, to the July twentieth meeting. Was there a second?
I'd second that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, any discussion? All right, Susan, go ahead.
Was there a second for that?
Uh, yes, I, I second.
Cox, Mr. Cox?
Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Okay, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Valada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
No, Mr. Chivone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd recommend if, um, you can't get Mr. Chivone on the line, that you go back through the minutes and just, um, reaffirm that, uh, the technical difficulty that occurred and mark him as, um, uh, n- not as a, a yes, I would, um, mark him as an abstention, um, due to technical difficulties.
Okay, do we, uh, Susan, do you know which ones we have to mark that on?
Yes.
We're waiting for him, I think it was like the last three.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, the next is, uh, plastic materials incorporated on Highland Road, five storage silos. Is there somebody here for that?
Yes, Dave Palaigra, I'm the architect, and we also have Jason Richardson, the, the owner.
All right, great. Um, do you guys want to give us a, just a quick overview of what, what's going on here?
Uh, just kind of a short background, they, uh, purchased the building back in 2011, and they've been actively growing, and they've come across the need to store bulk material. Therefore, they, they went ahead and purchased these five pre-made silo units, and then, uh, they actually began the process and didn't realize that permits were required. And so we were just trying to help address that need by developing drawings and talk to him a little bit about the process. We're at.
All right. Okay, just to give people idea where we're at here, is this, I got the right place? On the screen there? Off the roll and hold, okay. All right, well, we've got, I believe, uh, I've misplaced my stuff, I think we have comments from Mr. France?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, my report dated June 11th. Um, as the applicant stated, uh, the proposal is to erect five material storage silos, twelve foot, um, by thirty-eight feet tall, two separate areas on the property. Uh, three storage silos are planned on the southern side of the building, shown as area A, which, um, fronts or faces Highland. The other two are planned on the eastern side of the building, shown as area B, that's adjacent to Roll and Hold Parkway and the interior perimeter driveway. Um, the, uh, the setbacks for, for both locations comply with the code. Um, the height of a building cannot exceed thirty-five feet, however, pertinences, in this case, storage styles necessary for the primary business activity are exempt from the height requirements. My sense is these are probably similar in height to the existing, um, existing silos that are on the property. The, the architect probably could tell us that. Um, the, uh, the slight increase over the thirty-five feet to thirty-eight feet, in my, my opinion, is just a small increase. And again, because, um, uh, these, um, pertinences are exempt, um, the, uh, the commission just essentially needs to recognize that provision in the code. And again, I don't think that that's much of an increase over the, um, the building height that's required for the principal building. Um, and I do think also that, uh, the silos And I do think also that the silos, as are proposed, particularly along Roll and Hold Parkway, are relatively screened with the, there's a pretty good vegetation line, you could see it on the aerial. And then the difference, the Highland Road sits up higher than the site, so I think that if they're similar to the existing storage silos, they're really not going to have much of an impact, if any, from Highland Road. The only item that I felt was just something of discussion is the Area A where the three silos are planned, that's going to take up the entire 12 by 45 foot area, and all that grass will substantially be removed or replaced with concrete. I don't think there's really going to be any significant impact on the stormwater runoff, but it's going to be negligible, but I do think the city engineer should just take a peek at that area just to make sure. Other than the plan, the plan as proposed can be approved subject to the engineer taking a look at the stormwater management compliance. I can answer any questions the commission may have.
What was the one, the first thing you said that we should, we should actually, I think as part of a motion, I believe you were saying, that we should note?
Well, I just think you don't necessarily need to motion it, it's 116903G states that the main building heights set at 35 feet, but pertinences, in this case, storage silos are essentially accessory. And they're, as long as they're necessary for the primary business activity, which these clearly are, they're exempt from the height requirements. I just felt that if the architect could tell us what those existing storage silos are, the height of those, it would give some context for the commission to know the height of these.
Yeah, do you have that information?
Yeah, I'll let Jason Richardson speak, because he's familiar with the heights.
I'm guessing that the two existing ones that are near these ones are at the most six feet shorter. They go in three foot increments by the rings. And then there's a silo that's down the wall further. We have three existing ones, and these would be a total of eight. So the one that's down further, it's it might be 20 feet taller than the ones that are going in, it's really, it's quite tall. But that side of the building is huge too, it's two stories, so it's a really tall section.
Yeah, so I think for the commission's sake, just in the context of overall height, these seem to fit in just fine.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Is there any other comments, Building Department?
No comment, Mr. Chairman, I think the only reason why, you know, they're before your board is because, you know, in New Orleans, it states any new structure has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
Yes, and thank you, I appreciate you bringing this to us. Mayor, any, anything?
No comments.
All right. Mr. Bell?
Based on memory, Jason, is there an exit door somewhere along that one area? It's not going to compromise any access out of the building, is it?
No, no egress was affected at all, there's a door right near the end where the two bank is going, but it's still completely usable and will be used. The other side, there are no doors over there.
Okay, well, I knew there was one there on that corner.
Yeah, where the, where the two are going, there is a door that goes out right there. But again, it's not affected where the pad is, it was poured intentional. And then on the other side where the grass area is, there's no door to affect.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gilati?
I believe Mr. Gilati stepped away.
Sorry about that, Chairman, no, I was on mute, I had to unmute myself. No comment at this time.
All right. If, you know, will you take a look at, you know, if we approve this, would you take a look at that stormwater just to make sure that they're not having any impact?
I will do that, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Commission, anybody have any questions or comments?
Anthony Cox, actually, can we make a motion that we would approve this for administrative approval subject to Mr. Gilati's review for stormwater runoff, is that?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah. Well, I would make that motion.
Okay. Was that you, Pat, who said so?
Yes, yes.
All right, any more discussion on this? Here, Nun, Susan, you want to do a roll call on this last one here?
Sure, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cox, can you message us? I just talked to you on the phone how to do it, do you want to go ahead and message that you agree? And somebody can check and see it.
Do I do what?
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Chivone can message, I just spoke with him on the phone. So he can message.
I don't know if you can see that in the corner, he has voted yes for all the motions so far.
Great, he can just message for this one and can see it maybe?
Yep. Can you see it there on the corner? Right over.
I see it, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw. All right, well, thank you, thanks guys for bringing this plan in, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one miscellaneous issue, and that's the State Route 8 and the crossings road dedication plat approval. I don't know if this is, Mr. Gilati, do you want to explain this one?
Yeah, I can speak to it, Chairman, thank you. Yeah, like you say, this is the right-of-way dedication plat for the access, the Golden Link Access Drive project. Everybody knows, it's been discussed for many, many years. We've recently, so the commission knows, recently conducted a public bid for the construction of the access drive. So we've identified a contractor that council will soon be ordering the contract to. So the dedication plat before you here that you see on the screen is the dedication plat, which needs to be approved by the Planning Commission. So it can then be recorded with Summit County Recorder's Office, allowing the city to actually take possession of the 50 foot strip shown in gray, which is where the access drive will be located. And for what it's worth, the property owners on both sides who are donating land to create this 50 foot strip have already agreed to this and have already signed the plat.
All right, yeah, so the south side is Culver's, as you guys should remember. The north side is the one vacant outlot that's left over there. And so the future user will, you know, have basically, the current owner is dedicated, the future user will have that 25 feet less on their side. Anybody, is there any comments from staff or anything on this? Mayor or?
Chairman, if I may? Yeah, if I may?
Yep.
This project's a long time coming and glad to see this going through. If you guys aren't aware, this has been going on for a number of years and we're finally coming into fruition, and this is a great thing for access if we have an emergency or anything like that, so glad to see this getting finalized and
Great, and did you guys say if someone gets approved, when the construction starts to start on this?
Chairman, I don't know exactly when yet, council has not yet actually awarded the contract, but I expect them to do that soon. Once they do, we'll have a pre-construction conference with the contractor, which time we'll discuss scheduling, give you a more exact answer.
Is the guess that they'll get it done this year?
Yes, yes, this year.
Good. Because I'm sure the other commission members probably get asked this like about once a week, just like me. They were going to put their, they're working on it, they're working on it.
I get asked that at home all the time.
Any other comments from any of the staff? Any questions from the commission?
Kevin, let me ask one. We would approve the plan, is that what we're being asked to do as a planning commission, approve the plans as submitted, is that?
Yes.
Well, I'd make that motion.
Okay, motion, Mr. Cox? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Jason.
Jason? All right, any more discussion on this? Sounds like nothing, Susan, you go ahead and do a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone, you can message in? Mr. Cox?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see if Mr. Chivone put a comment in there.
Chairman, Joe Gilati here again, with passage of this here, thank you. The plat does need your signature on it as chairman of the Planning Commission, so if you could arrange, obviously we're doing this virtual, but if you could arrange to get your signature on the plat, either with Susan or with Mark Adetti.
Okay, yeah, I'll arrange that.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Chivone, are you able to type a comment in there? Well, we may have to check, well, we may have to meet this one, one of the ones with attention by, due to technical difficulties.
Yeah.
All right. Well, going back to our agenda, so I, that's our last item. Is there any, anything else? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn if someone wants to make it.
I'll also move Anthony Cox.
All right. Your second?
Okay, Pat.
All right. Let's just do one last roll call, if we're having some technical issues.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone, you can message, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velada?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you and thank you everybody for dealing with some of the technical things here, and we'll be back next month.
All right.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.